Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Attendances are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-dashway.gov/agenda or found at the back of the room. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Melm.
Present.
Roach. Serrano.
Woman Roach is excused.
Okay, thank you.
This is Serrano, I'm attending electronically.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. And with that, would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we will move on to our first item on the agenda. Approval of meeting minutes for February 6th, 10th, and 13th. To approve the meeting minutes of the city council meeting, mini-retreat, regular workshop held on February 6th, February 10th, and February 13th respectively. Item C, Resolutions, oh, sorry, I skipped one. Item B, Bills and Communications. To approve claims in the total amount of $6,840,266.24. Item C, Resolution Number 4308 and Number 4309, Led Mobile Radio, MLR, sorry, backwards, LMR, to Cellular LTE Radio Interface Infrastructure. Item D, Resolution Number 4310, Agreements of the Purchase of Virtual Desktop Infrastructure. And with that, can I get a motion?
And to make sure I understood, Mayor Barajas, we're under the consent agenda here?
Correct.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campos. And can I give a roll call vote?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Melm.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas.
Yes. Thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda. Proclamations and acknowledgements, none listed. And with that, we will move on towards the following item. Item Six, Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each. By the mayor, those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. So with that, we have a new process in how we're going to be keeping time. I'll refer to Ms. Debbie for tracking purposes. So you will have your three minutes to speak. At two minutes and forty-five seconds, she'll give you a warning that your time is running out. So you're invited to wrap up your comments. And then at three minutes, your mic will be cut off. So with that, I would like to invite anyone from chambers to address, that wish to address council, to come to the podium. Go ahead. And you want to hit the button to turn on the mic? Thank you. If you can state your name and address for the record?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Barajas and fellow council. I am Dana Crutchfield, 8914 Whipple, Pasco. I'm submitting to you, supporting item number 12A this evening. I've been a Pasco resident most of my life. I'm a registered nurse with many years of experience working in the emergency department. I have seen the damage that drug use causes. The modern strain of marijuana have THC content three times that of twenty years ago. Young people are the most vulnerable to lifelong mental health consequences due to this high potency THC, which triggers chemical changes within the brain. I will not include additional data. I know that you've had much on that already. The labeling on these products is enticing to children and teens. There's been a steep rise in cannabis poisoning among children who accidentally consumed marijuana-laced products and required emergency treatment for psychotic symptoms and more. Mr. Morgan's Spokane Lucky Leaf Pot Shop advertises, quote, "thin mints and sunset sherbert, lemon shortbread, butterfingas, candy concentrates that will melt your face off, and creamed papaya that will have you wrecked," end quote. Retail cannabis shops have a twenty-one-year age restriction in order to purchase products. However, this does not mean items purchased will not reach the hands of others. Mr. Morgan proposed a cannabis business in Pasco in 2014. In 2015, despite Pasco's ban, he opened his pot shop without a business license. He claims his business will, quote, "revitalize downtown, decrease foot traffic and homelessness will decrease." Such baseless claims are an insult to the community. In June of 2022, a member of the Spokane Business and Commercial Property Owner Council stated, quote, "In addition to violent crime and vandalism, burglary has skyrocketed, especially in downtown Spokane." Numerous community agencies have expressed their opposition to marijuana sale in our city. I am not aware of any single public agency that has expressed support for cannabis sale in Pasco. Kennewick, Richland, and Franklin County do not allow retail cannabis. Pasco citizens deserve the same commitment. A recent survey, which is a very small sample of Pasco voters, indicated a split among Pasco residents on the topic. Because this issue remains so divided, it would seem best to leave a vote to the people. The only time Pasco community had the opportunity to vote on the issue, over sixty percent said no. The gentleman from Green to Go who spoke at a recent council meeting on this topic stated, quote, "Marijuana made Steve Lee a millionaire, and there is more to be made in Pasco," end quote. His comment candidly addresses whom will benefit from this business, its owner. The public dollars spent on dealing with the fallout of allowing retail drug sales in our community will far exceed the revenue it may generate. Please continue the ban on cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. If you can turn on your mic? Thank you.
New process. Michelle Andrews, 1421 North Road, 77. Everything she said is true. I want to know if it's even legal to rescind a vote that you've promised. Now, people came out in large numbers, and you're supposed to represent them, not tell them what you're going to do on behalf of them. And I am very disappointed as a mother and as a grandmother of children that are just going into high school right now. This is going to circulate around the young kids. And everything she said is right. My husband's a retired paramedic firefighter that worked with Bob Gere. She knows him. Thirty-one years in the city of Pasco. He would absolutely just be livid if something happened to our grandkids. And I don't want to be dramatic, but you guys absolutely let this city down. You could have at least kept it out at Carter. And I absolutely oppose any. And we have done this for years. We have said no. And we've been successful. Making more money, I mean, you just disclosed that you're going to write off $210,482, and part of that is ambulance. How much more are you going to write off when kids are committing suicide and they're going schizophrenic from marijuana? It is much more powerful than it ever was before. This is not alcohol. I know that people get some benefits medically, and I wish it was just sold through the pharmacy, period. This is not a game. And we withstood it all these years. And quite frankly, I want to know legally how anyone can rescind a vote they already made. I want to know the RCW. And I would like that sent to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council?
Hi, my name is Kylie Grimes. I'm the newly-elected chair of the Downtown Pasco Development Authority. I live at 5103 Cleveland Lane. I am a resident of Pasco. And I am just here to remind council that back in July of 2022, DPDA did take a vote during one of our regular meetings to support the sale of retail cannabis. And I believe we did provide council with a letter telling you that we did support that. And a few of our board members had gone around and collected signatures and had a petition of downtown business owners and building owners that did support the sale of retail cannabis, and that was provided to you guys in July as well. So I just wanted to remind the council of that action that was taken in July. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from anyone in the chambers? Just press the button?
How about that? Okay. Bear with me, I'm going to set my timer. I'm Wilson, Steve Wilson from Pasco. I want to thank the council, city manager Lincoln, Director Ferguson, Chief Roski, everyone else who takes the time to help keep Pasco proud. I really want you all to know that there's one dude out there cheering you on and appreciating your hard work. I have steadily been impressed by your collective ability to remain committed as a team with the community in mind. Having said that, I am certainly concerned about what I consider to be a mistake that should be rectified in the most expeditious way possible. I'm talking about the rescinding of Resolution 4303, what I call mountains out of molehills. We have an eight-year plan, or did have an eight-year plan for downtown. I would rather be discussing maybe a summary of Pasco Planning Commission meetings or our council meetings, but we still have this resource drain in front of us. Also, keep in mind, someone hasn't been mentioned. Councilmember Serrano had in one of the meetings mentioned a deadline that we let lapse. I thought there was a reason to get this ordinance passed so we could avoid penalties for delays. You guys know the nuance there, figure it out. I know you know, my concern is that we're going to let deadlines lapse. It's going to also tax our resources here to redo all this. So the ordinance was action, rescinding stops the action. I just would like someone at some point to put out some penalties or deadlines related to that. Here is what I'd like to talk about as well. There's been a lot of this talk about the boogeyman, crime rates increasing because legal cannabis. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Roski, but you had mentioned that there's been a 200% increase in auto thefts in the past year alone. Some anecdotal evidence of officers releasing criminals due to thresholds made the argument that legal threshold should be reasonable suspicion, not probable cause. That's a debate we might take up some other day, but for now, what I'm trying to point out is there is already a problem. You can't blame any problems about this on cannabis. And it really irritates me that we're convoluting the discussion that way. There's been plenty of groundwork. Originally, this was thoroughly discussed, analyzed, investigated, researched, you name it, put through by the public. I would like to also point out that I was a document specialist for mortgage company before the bubble burst. In my opinion, Councilmember Brown was accurate in stating that once signed, any additional change to a document needs to be run by the signator. That would include...
You have fifteen seconds left?
Thank you. Any additional attachments, tenets, amendments, variables, actions notwithstanding, actions withstanding, any ex parte meetings, you know, anything like that that comes about. A signator needs the last call because they didn't sign off on that prior. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any last comment?
Good evening, council. Thomas Granblaw, Big Maple Properties, 108 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. As many of you may know, I've been a regular weekly attendee at these meetings since long before you guys were part of this. And I believe the only person on city staff is Mr. White, who was here when I first started attending. So the last couple of weeks have been interesting, to say the least. I, it was great to hear from Mr. Ferguson, the actual process to go back and revisit something that was voted on. He covered that quite well last meeting. There were lots of ins and outs. I wanted to comment on the actual item that was voted on with the multiple motions. In all those years that I've been attending, I have never seen anything be presented to council as convoluted as that, anywhere near as much. And I've been, I've been at the front line of this, and even I was confused by all of these different motions and all these options, and what do they mean, and these directions that were given or alluded to. So I wanted to give my support to the council members that decided to go back and say, hey, let's look at what happened there. I know it takes a lot of humility to do something like that, to say, hey, you know what, maybe we need to look back at things. And yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that this started off as a grassroots effort to try and bring a business in that wanted to help be a partner in the downtown, just like myself, just like my wife, in revitalizing the downtown. And it was supported by the overwhelming majority of business and business managers that we visited during that period. And just thank you all for your support and reconsidering, and hopefully you have all the information in front of you now that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for comment from chambers. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Thank you, Debbie, for helping us with that. Item Eight on the agenda, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. We do have a public hearing. Item A, public hearing continued and ordinance...
Madam Mayor, a point of order, I think we missed item seven on the agenda.
We sure did. I apologize. Stepping back to number seven on the agenda, I was trying to get through this agenda. Number seven, reports from committees and/or officers. Any of the council members attending and attended any meetings, any special events that you wish to share? And Mayor Protan?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. I was excited to share something, so it's important for me. So I spent a couple days of vacation from my day job last week to travel to Olympia on a pretty quick whirlwind trip to help lobby on behalf of our legislative agenda. I had an opportunity to meet with all of our, the six of our legislators up in Olympia. They, we talked about our need for certain funding asks or requests for different various capital items, you know, that are on our legislative agenda. Overall, the conversation ended being dominated mostly by what wasn't on our legislative agenda, but rather what is on the agenda for the legislators up in Olympia. So a lot of the conversation was about missing middle housing. Obviously, housing affordability is one of the items that we have been championing for some time. We've done truly cutting-edge for Washington in terms of eastern Washington cities embracing additional housing options. However, the bills that are currently moving through the process would expand and mandate a certain level of housing far above and beyond what we have historically done. So for example, House Bill 1110, which is moving forward, is, would mandate up to four units per residential lot in all zones within, in all cities within Washington State. So that would mean up to a fourplex in any neighborhood, any residential neighborhood, with very few exceptions. Now, this bill may not pass as written. I don't know. It's been changed substantially one time. It's likely to continue to evolve over time. But those are some of the things that are happening up in Olympia that will have a very material effect on us. Another example of a bill, I don't remember which one it is off the top, I remember the number off the top of my head, but would, would mandate allowance up to two accessory dwelling units for all residential lots across the entire state. So again, regardless of zoning, regardless of other density options, it would be everywhere. So we will see where some of those come to. I, having discussed with city staff and read the bills myself, am very concerned about it. We've spent millions of dollars as a city getting our master planning all synchronized. I think, as Director White likes to say, probably for the first time in Pasco's history, we have current master plans for all of our master plans. Sewer, water, transportation, et cetera, are all synchronized right now in a way they probably have never happened before. They assume a level of density and a type of growth that this would be very disruptive towards. So at minimum, if this were to pass, we would likely see a lot of need for updating those plans. So again, I believe, I believe we should be, we should certainly provide our advice and recommendations about what may work for our city. Certainly, that's what I talked to staff about. And I'd invite interim city manager Lincoln to maybe expound on that. But overall, I would say, just close my comments, the trip was very productive. I was able to meet with other city council members from across the state. I was able to hear from the governor, from the budget writers, from policy leaders within both chambers and both sides of the aisle, as well as our local legislators, and helped them try to understand what we need and where we're coming from on a number of items. So I'm sure I'm missing a ton of details. It was a very busy trip and very productive. But I'd ask if you wouldn't mind indulging the, sure, interim city manager Lincoln, could you, could you chat a little bit about what I might be missing or the other implications that you might see from him?
Sure. Oh, thank you, Mayor and council. I think it's always a good opportunity to get in front of our legislative delegation, have the opportunity to visit them in person. I think that was an added benefit of this visit. House Bill 1110 is one where obviously that kind of throws all of our planning efforts to the wind, so to speak, if it were to come to fruition the way that it's intended. So the four to six lots, depending on which version of the bill and which area of town, certainly throws off any transportation planning, any of our utility plans that we put together and that you've approved. I think that today, it's in the House hearing in appropriations, they're going to spend probably a couple hours talking about it this evening. The hearing started at 1:30 this afternoon, but there were eighteen bills on the agenda. So they're also, the legislature is also spending a lot of time kind of pushing through a lot of bills, and this is one that you don't want to rush, obviously, because it impacts all of the cities in our region that make up the four of the tri-cities, as weird as that sounds. So it's something that staff have been monitoring very closely, thanks to our team at Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Also, they've been advising us on how to participate in the process and making sure that we have people available to testify. Unfortunately, having a council meeting on a Tuesday today, we provided written testimony, but we did make sure to also send notes to Representative Connors, who's on the committee, and she was responsive this afternoon as well. So it's nice that we were able to meet, share our goals here, and speak with them. So it was a good trip. It was nice to have the assistance from Gordon Thomas Honeywell to go through a lot of the various asks that Mayor Protan mentioned. But I think it's still a long session. We've got through April to still pay attention to bills that are coming forward. So there's still more to come.
Thank you for sharing that. Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Just a quick update on my assignments for the month. In lieu of, some may think that we don't do our homework, we have very productive assignments with the Downtown DPA. I'm just proud to announce they are moving right along. They are following suit, and I believe that they're just going to reach their goals. They're doing a great job. I don't want to belabor the meeting, it's a strong agenda tonight, but be proud of downtown. I think they're moving along very great. The meeting was informative. They had all their ducks in a row. And I think the relationship between council and Downtown Pasco is healthy. We're sharing information. It was just a really good meeting, the last meeting. So hats off to the team at Downtown Pasco. Very good meeting, very informative. And then for BF COG, I even emailed them back of how impressed I was of their meeting agenda. It was very well presented. It was informative. It was detailed. Again, just really in good shape in how Pasco is connected to these organizations. So this is all public information, you can take a look. But, you know, sometime we read 750 pages, depending on what's coming our way. So with a real life as well as this, hats off to the council. Just to be clear, we do our homework. I'm looking at a full book tonight that we're going to address. So hats off to Pasco, hats off to Downtown Pasco for coming along. And I do want to mention, very impressed with Jerry and Damian Davis. Hats off. It looks like it's just going in the right direction. So again, to Downtown DPA, thumbs up, and thank you, Madam Mayor and council.
Thank you for sharing. Councilmember Melm.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to go down to the animal shelter this past week. Wasn't a scheduled event or nothing, but I had a dog run into my business, and I went down there and dropped the dog off. And I'm happy to report that actually, the interaction was very good. The staff was very friendly, and they did not tell me to keep the dog. They took the dog. And again, I was pleasantly surprised on the facility, and I just thought we're turning, at least in that respect, I thought we were turning the corner. And again, there was no hassle, no nothing. So hopefully, things continue that way. And again, I was pleasantly very surprised. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other comments? None. So thank you again, everyone, for sharing and participating. Correct. Councilmember Serrano, I almost forgot about you. Do you have any comments to share?
No, no, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will move on to item number eight on the agenda, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. We do have a public hearing continued and ordinance number 4641 for Mendoza Right-of-Way Vacation, and we have Director White for some comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. And this item is continued from the last regularly scheduled council meeting. However, it occurs, the potential right-of-way vacation is for 10 feet on the east side of Fifth Avenue located between Ainsworth and A Street. The vacation that's adjacent both these properties, for some reason, did not occur as the rest of Fifth Avenue did some twenty-plus years ago. And assuming the right-of-way is vacated through council action tonight, this would still leave 60 feet of right-of-way, which is our city standard for these types of the local access streets.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or comments, Mr. Director White, before we open the hearing? Seeing none, this public hearing is open for comments, and I will call upon three, there's three individuals that signed on. Philip Gates? I take that back. I moved too quick on that one. Is there anyone in the chambers or online that has any comment on this particular issue? The Mendoza Right-of-Way Vacation? Second call for comment on Mendoza Right-of-Way Vacation? Go ahead, sir. Do you want to step up to the podium?
Well, I just want to know, what does vacation mean? What is the vacate? What does that mean?
Director White?
That means to take right-of-way that was dedicated, in this case, probably close to 100 years ago, and give it to the adjacent property owners.
To the guys who want to build the apartments, right?
No. It's, if you look at the screen, it's, they're both single-family homes on Fifth Avenue.
Oh, oh. And so they're going to give it to the property owners, right? Those two houses? Or buildings?
The green and red highlighted areas will be dedicated. dedicated, de- dedicated to the adjacent property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the Mendoza right-of-way vacation? Okay, hearing no further comments. This hearing is now closed. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number four-six-four-one, vacating portions of the right-of-way, uh, along South Fifth Avenue in Pasco and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh, Councilmember Melony. All those in favor say aye.
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 And none opposed. Thank you. With that, we move on to our next, uh, item on the agenda. Um, item B, public hearing continued and ordinance number forty-six forty-two Jubilee Foundation right-of-way vacation. And again, Director White?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and Council, and likewise, this, uh, vacation request was, uh, continued from, uh, the council meeting two weeks ago. It's a vacation proposal for a series of rights of way north of A Street and east of Heritage Boulevard. It involves both street right-of-way and alley right-of-way that again was dedicated to the city, uh, a little more than a century ago. Um, the staff expects a submittal of a preliminary plot application and as noted in the agenda report, uh, that potential subdivision application will be weighed against the development standards in the Pasco municipal code in terms of spacing and, uh, street layout. So staff would also recommend approval of this vacation request.
So do we have any comments from, uh, Council regarding this, um, item? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director White, s- so, what I'm looking at, and I note, I note that this is highlighted by, um, staff in our agenda report. Um, for us to waive compensation, we have to meet one of those five requirements. And the recommendation was looking at potentially condition, condition four. Um, but that would require a substitute right-of-way to be returned back to the city. For this to, for this to fall within that, do we need to bind the applicant, applicant in some form or fashion to a future dedication and substitute of right-of-way? At least in an amount, um, uh, um, equal or greater than, about what we're be- they beginning? I'm, I'm hav- I'm having trouble reading into here how we can do this without, while we're still waiting on the plat.
I'll, I'll try my best to answer that. I don't, I don't think we're required to make that kind of, uh, detailed comparison. If, if you'll notice the highlighted areas, the rights of way that were dedicated in this subdivision many, many years ago also include many alley right-of-way, uh, locations and vacations, which of course is a development pattern that's simply, it's, it's just, isn't used any longer. Uh, also, the right-of-way that you see in most cases is eighty feet with the exception of the far northerly and most of the easterly, uh, boundaries of the proposed vacation area. So I think, all things considered, we do meet condition number four of the PMC regarding, uh, compensation.
For- forgive me for being slow, but, um, doesn't that require a substitute right-of-way to be granted? And we're talking about turning it over without a granting of a substitute, so could someone, I, I guess, uh, maybe if Mr. Ferguson could help, I, I just, I, I'm, I'm reading the plain language here. I have no opposition to this from a, from a technical perspective. I'm looking at it purely from a legal perspective of how do we, how do we meet the requirements? I just wanna make sure that I understand how we meet that.
So let me make sure I understand the question. Are, are you concerned that PMC section twelve forty-one twenty print two, uh, with the conditions listed, that, uh, this particular situation might not meet all of those?
In our, in our packet here, under twelve, twelve dot forty, it specifically lists five, uh, five criteria to return that. So I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact citation. And then item four there is what the staff has recommended that we need to consider in terms of, of doing this. And they'd be required to subs- grant a substitute travel and access corridors.
It, it's either one or more, so they don't have to meet all of those. So it sounds like in this particular case, uh, one of those has been met.
So can someone tell me which one has been met? Because I don't believe any of those is being, having been met.
Sure, it's, uh, it looks like, uh, the proposed vacation does not meet, it, it doesn't.
So if we don't meet these criteria, I don't know how I can move forward on a vacation.
Yeah, I'm not sure the, what the, the details are on that.
Well, well, Mr. Maloney, when a preliminary plat is submitted, the, the, the needed right-of-way will be dedicated. It may not be in the same, well, it won't be in the same configuration, but it will be dedicated to serve those properties.
So what I'm asking is, do we need a, any sort of guarantee that item four is met? Because currently what you, what we're being asked in front of us, the motion in front of us is to approve a vacation or right-of-way without a substitute having been, uh, declared and nor an evaluation of whether the substitute right-of-way has a value, um, at least equal to the right-of-way to be vacated. So I'm just looking purely at that language and I don't understand how we're meeting that. Um, and I'm not hearing that I have any confidence from staff right now that we are meeting that. So again, I have no technical issue with the fact that we will lay out different roads in the future and that will meet our transportation needs. I'm just trying to meet our, our, our code. So if, and I, I, if we wanna have this hearing, perhaps we can.
Uh, Tim, let's do, uh, let's put this to later on in the agenda and we'll figure out what's going on. So we'll put this later on.
If I may interject, it seems like we do meet condition five. We've had, we just had a conversation about our middle housing problems and, and lack of inventory. Uh, now, I've not done an analysis, but certainly the resulting benefit to the community or the project by providing these additional types of housing that we're short on inventory provides a tremendous vanity, benefit to the city overall. So I question whether or not five is the applicable, uh, element and whether or not further analysis than Pete Serrano coming up with the whim, um, is required to make that finding.
It looks like there's typo in not meeting the requirements. So let me figure out what's going on and we'll, we'll come back to it.
And we have comment from Councilman, uh, Compos?
If we're gonna come back to it, I don't know how much I've got to weigh in. I just, I'm reading it almost completely different than I think I believe Councilman Mayor Protem Maloney's indicating. The way I'm reading it is it's, we are determining as the council if we would like to have compensation for vacating the right-of-way and we can waive the right to compensation if we meet the following conditions. Um, in that case, again, according to Mr. Ferguson, if there's a typo, which it may look like there is, if we initiate a resolution or if we request it the city and we have a resulting benefit to the community or project requiring vacation outweighs the appraised value, I, I, I just, I think that there's probably a way you could argue that if that's the case, we might meet one or more of the following, so I don't, I don't quite have the same point of view, I think, as Mayor Protem Maloney. I'm, I think I'm seeing it a different way.
So, right, right after that, so you'll notice that the, the next whereas goes into all the reasoning about how those are met, so it, it looks like that the whereas right between there, uh, was taken, it, it's a carryover from a previous resolution, or excuse me, uh, previous ordinance, so we can take a look at it and figure it out. Okay, thank you.
We have not opened the public hearing.
We've not opened the public hearing, so if you can just bear with the comments and then we'll open the hearing to where you can make your comment. Thank you.
Mr. Ferguson, would you recommend that we hold the hearing and hold off on the resolution until later? Or would you recommend that we move this item further along in the agenda until we can discuss in more complete?
Okay, we will be moving the public hearing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'm happy to make a motion. Um, do you have a recommendation? Does staff have a recommendation where to put it on the agenda?
Uh, you can put, uh, move to eleven, please.
All right, I move to, um, move item eight B, the, uh, public hearing con- continued and ordinance number four-six-four-two Jubilee Foundation right-of-way vacation to item eleven A on the agenda.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sir, we'll, you, we'll allow you to make your comments when we actually have the hearing at the end of the meeting. Sorry, towards the end of the agenda. Correct. So there's a motion. Uh, can I get a second? Seconded, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, and none opposed. And with that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which will be item nine, actually, executive session. So we do have need for executive session discussion with legal counsel about legal risk of current or proposed action per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero, uh, one I for fifteen minutes, correct? Okay, so, uh, Council, we will be in executive session, uh, to return fifteen minutes. It is, it is seven fifty eight, and at this point, we do need to extend our executive session for another ten minutes. Um, so we'll return at, um, eight oh eight. Thank you. It is, it is seven fifty eight, and at this point, we do need to extend our executive session for another ten minutes. Um, so we'll return at, um, eight oh eight. Thank you.
It is 8:20 and we are officially back from executive session, so we'll move on with our agenda as scheduled. Moving on to item number 10, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, 10A. Resolution number 4311 Process Water Reuse Facility, PWRF, Draft Processor Wastewater Treatment Agreement, WTA. Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you know, we have been before council several times related to the improvement at the Process Water Reuse Facility. And tonight, we're here to take comment and consider the processor, WTA. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of comments. I think the council received some letters today. And so, before we get started, I wanted to kind of highlight some aspects of the issues that are of concern right now. And then, we can certainly open it up for questions and comments. First off, I wanted to mention that in order to make any improvements at the reuse facility, we have to get ecology approval. And as of a meeting that staff had last week, it does look like that ecology is in favor of moving forward with approval of the proposed facility plan. There is one caveat, but I'll cover that a little bit later. A lot of people have identified this project as a complex project. And I think it might seem complex, but when you break it down into its parts, where you have the anaerobic digesters, one part, the nitrogen removal is another part, and the renewable natural gas as a third part, it really isn't that complex. The design of these systems are very complex, but the management of it is not. The focus of this project is and always will be wastewater treatment and final disposal to meet Department of Ecology permit requirements. We know that the renewable natural gas and the potential for algae are actually byproducts of the processes that we are using to treat the wastewater. The low-rate anaerobic digesters that are proposed are tried and true methods for typical wastewater treatment. So there's nothing special about those. Large projects like this, it is not uncommon to have a developer on the project, the owner of the project, the designer of the project, the construction contractor, and the operators of the facility. So technically, this is not a whole lot different than any other project that we have. And Burnham, as we are structuring it right now, has the overall responsibility for the delivery of the project, which we mean construction of it, and the operation of it. And they have years of experience providing these type of services on projects that are even larger than this one. The one of the other comments that keeps being brought up is the potential volatility of the renewable natural gas market. And I wanted to mention that Burnham has already secured a 20-year fixed-price agreement for the renewable natural gas. So whatever concerns there are out there about the volatility of the RNG market, I think those can be put aside for now because that's taken care of. And 100% of the RNG revenue returns back to the project to help offset the cost of the project. There is a comment made about the Burnham taking a certain amount off the top of that RNG revenue. And that thought is related to the idea of the base fee. That amount was calculated as part of the base fee that is used to determine the amounts paid by each of the processors. So I want to make sure nobody's misunderstanding what that amount is for. Now, one of the other options that is getting a lot of attention is the nitrogen removal system that is proposed for this project. There's a company called Grosswind Technologies, and they have a rotating algol biofilm nitrogen removal process. And this process, that we call them RAB units, rotating algol biofilm RAB units, is in some ways a new technology, but it's been around for 10 years. So it's been in use, and it takes a while sometimes for new technologies to get incorporated, like other ones that have been in use for 30 or 40 years. But it is a proven technology. It has been proven to remove nitrogen from wastewater streams. This fact has been validated by numerous engineers on this very project, both city engineers, Burnham engineers, ecology engineers, and two independent engineering firms, E3 and Montrose. And these are engineering firms that were hired by Burnham and by the financing company supporting this project to make sure that the project that we're proposing is viable, and they all have said, yes, it is. The interesting thing about these RABs is they are redundant. There are 10 belts in a unit, there are 13 units, they all do the same thing. We have no reason to believe that one unit won't perform the same way as another unit. And then, one of the things that people keep bringing up, and this may be news to some of our processors, and that is there is now a performance guarantee to Burnham and to us and to the processors for the nitrogen removal system. So there is no risk to the city or the processors for any additional equipment needed in order to ensure the nitrogen removal requirements are met. That's part of the performance guarantee that's been negotiated. Some may suggest that we have not looked at all of the different alternatives for options other than what's being proposed. And I wanted to mention that we have looked at five different alternatives. We've looked at reducing the size of the project, both on the LRADs. We've looked at eliminating the nitrogen removal. We've looked at eliminating the RNG. We've looked at increasing the land treatment system. So we've looked at numerous different options to determine if there is a less expensive alternative. And almost all the alternatives, I say almost because it's not every single one of them, are more expensive than the one that's currently being proposed. And the reason for that is because of the reduced renewable natural gas revenues that come in, because we wouldn't be making as much methane, or the investment tax credit revenues that come in that is specifically tied to the all the equipment related to the renewable natural gas. We now get a 30% investment tax credit on all equipment related to the renewable natural gas. So all of that would go away if the size of the project were reduced. We also have looked at the potential to increase our land treatment system. I reached out to several local property owners to see if they would be willing to take reuse water and use it for irrigation of their crops. None of them have called me back yet, so they don't seem interested. We're not sure why. I would like to be able to talk with anybody who might be interested. The issue related to that, though, is that if we bring more property into our land treatment system, ecology is going to require that we have full control of those properties. We have to manage all of the water that goes on it. We have to manage the crop rotation that goes on those fields. We have to put monitoring wells down to the groundwater to ensure we're not causing problems. And so, there is a lot of requirements needed by increasing our land treatment system. And we're not sure that ecology would necessarily approve that if there are other alternatives available. And so, some have also commented about the Burnham wastewater treatment agreement, which we talked about a couple of weeks ago. And I just wanted to say thanks to all the processors who've submitted comments today on potential edits to that agreement. They've highlighted some areas that we think we can still make changes to, to make sure that it includes all the necessary things that we think it's needed. The language for a future performance bond for Burnham is now included in that agreement. And I don't think the processors were aware of that. That was a good comment on their part. And so, I wanted to make everybody aware that that is now included. And so, many other things. So without boring everybody any further, I'd be happy to answer any questions from council. And we have several people in the audience that are willing to talk with you and share their thoughts about this tonight. And we have several people online as well that may be interested in commenting on this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Worley, for your comments. At this point, do we have any comments from council members, councilman Campos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Worley, just to be clear, you're talking about the aerobic nitrogen cycle, are you correct? Is what this fixing is?
What's that?
The aerobic digesters.
The anaerobic digesters?
The anaerobic digesters, right.
What about them?
That's what we're talking about, that how plants have been fixing and uptaking nitrogen, which is no different than like we're asking potential people, landowners, to take nitrogen. Plants use nitrogen. So my point is, you've been talking, you mentioned that this technology's been used for 10 years, but in the grand scheme of things, plants have been using nitrogen for millions of years. This isn't new. The technology might be, and how we're actually getting the algae to do it, but it's not new.
You are correct. In wastewater treatment systems, there has always, there has been the process of growing algae within the wastewater stream. The difference between the Grosswind system is that they use a vertical belt system to do it, rather than an underwater rotating disc, which is commonly used in the past. So they've developed a different system that appears to have much better success at removing nitrogen from wastewater streams. Thank you.
Any further comment from council? Mayor Fadlamaloni?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Worley. You know, we've talked about this a lot, and I'm very interested in hearing other voices from the audience. So I'll save some of my comments, but I will note that, you know, when we're looking at this, this is really intended to be a partnership between the city. this is this is really intended to be a partnership between the city, obviously, the processors, and largely the Port of Pasco, as well as one of the primary agencies that brings ag processors to our community. I'd be very interested in understanding exactly what their position is and how they'll be a partner in these agreements. Because this is a this is a lot. This is a lot of money at stake here. This is a lot of potential risks that we're bringing onto the city, and I'd be very interested in understanding, you know, the port's role in that as we as we continue to move forward on this. So I do note that we do have the executive director here from the Port of Pasco, and I hope that he has plans on chatting with us. So great, that's all, I'll leave it with that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Serrano, do you have any comments before we invite public comment?
No, nothing specific. I look forward to hearing, as Councilman Maloney indicated or said, from from these folks in the audience. I think it's important to hear the voices. We've read a couple of letters that express concern, but I'm of the opinion that we're not at the point where it's all systems on fire, but we do need to listen to the voices. We need to make a well-informed decision and work together with our partners.
Well, thank you for that. So I will, at this point, I will open it to comment from public on this matter. And I do have three individuals waiting online. I hope they're still online. So we'll allow Mr. Randy Hayden to speak, and then we'll move on to our virtual attendees.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I am Randy Hayden, the executive director at the Port of Pasco. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight. And I want to commend the City of Pasco on your investment in infrastructure across the city. When we talk about economic development, which is the port's main goal, we couldn't do it without the infrastructure development that the city has put in to enable all the great things that happen. So to me, the biggest investment you can make in economic development is in your infrastructure, including the PWRF that we're talking about tonight. I remember back in 1990, when the idea of the Pasco Processing Center was was being born, and the city decided to build the PWRF. And at that time, it was a build-it-and-they-will-come project. This was not a guarantee that you were going to sink this money into this project and that you were you had guaranteed food processors. You built it on a risk basis and were very successful. And Simplot became now Pasco Processing, became the first company to use that facility. So it was very forward-thinking and really set the stage for all of the success in food processing that we have had since that time. So again, commend the City of Pasco for really that forward-thinking back then, and I hope going forward now with the expansion of the PWRF. That really is the next step to keep economic development going. Dairy Gold could not happen. We're all excited about that project. The new research plant also really is reliant on this expansion and upgrading of the PWRF. And we continue to get more calls from other food processors. We're we're very selective at this point about what type of food processors we talk to. If they're seasonal jobs and low-wage jobs, we really say we're not interested. But if they're the high-tech jobs that Dairy Gold and researchers bring, we would like to be able to bring them to the city. But at this point, we are, we always call Steve, hey, Steve, how much you got? And at this point, it's zero. So we're returning folks away right now. So we would like to recommend that you move forward with this so that we can bring additional jobs and business to the City of Pasco. Something else that we're hearing from food processors is that sustainability is one of their primary goals. So when we talk about the renewable natural gas, the type of algae technology that we're talking about, that's very attractive to these companies because they have their own sustainability goals that this fits right into. So we support the the type of process and technology that Mr. Worley has outlined. We think that's really going to be attractive to the the food processors of the next generation that we would hope to attract here. And just want to close by commending the staff that you have here. They work so hard on all this stuff. They put in countless hours. I think you've got a fantastic staff working on this for you. And with that, we would really recommend that you move forward with the agreement and the expansion of the PWRF. To answer your question about port investment in this particular facility, we don't see the port investing in the PWRF facility. We have really concentrated our investment on the infrastructure extension to where the plants go. So with Dairy Gold, that was about a $22 million investment of the port. And of course, we cobbled together a number of funding sources to do that. But we've always seen that kind of on-the-ground-to-the-site development as the port role and with the major infrastructure components on the on the backside as the city role. So we're certainly happy to support any funding requests that you have with state, federal sources. I think we make good partners with that and happy to continue doing that. But that's how we see our role in this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we open it up to Philip Gates. Are you still online, Philip?
Mr. Gates is actually in the audience tonight instead of online.
Okay.
So we'll have him.
Even better.
Hi, my name is Philip Gates. I'm with Grosswind Technologies, the algobiofilm system that you're all speaking about today. And I just want to commend the city and the staff for bringing this project together. It is extremely exciting for me to be a part of it. I'm a veteran of wastewater engineering for about 25 years and came onboard with Grosswind about two years ago in order to promote the technology because of the sustainability and because of the excitement that algae in this space does provide. I want to give maybe a little bit of an anecdote about the excitement of the technology. We're located in central Iowa. It's a technology that was born out of Iowa State University. And we had a student come into our office the other day, and he said, I know about the company. I know what you're doing, and I don't care what I do for it, but I want to be a part of it. And, you know, you're talking about economic development, and I think, you know, it was just spoken about, if you build it, they will come. I truly believe that and appreciate the opportunity. We, as a company, appreciate the opportunity that is here at Pasco.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have Chris, Mr. Chris Tynan. Is he in person or virtually? Mr. Chris Tynan, is there any additional comments you'd like to?
I can see him, and it looks like he's muted. He's speaking, and there's no sound, so I don't know if he can hear us, but.
That's common for Chris.
If you can hear us, you're muted.
Still muted.
Mr. Tynan? Mr. Tynan, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Yeah, he's still trying, and it's still muted.
All right, now it said unmuted, does that work?
There you go.
We can hear you.
Wonderful. Very nice, you guys can hear me. Nice to hear you guys. Yeah, I was not planning on speaking tonight, but very nice to meet you. I did learn about the letters that came in and thought it was good. Some of, generally, I prefer to hear Steve's voice. I think we work for the city. This is a city project, and it's better for you guys to discuss yourselves, if it makes sense, rather than hear from me. But there were some comments directly about us and thought it was worth talking a little bit and giving you guys our perspective. So first of all, we're very grateful for the leadership that's been shown by this council working with us since we won the RFP in May. Been very constructive to work with the whole team at the city, of course, led by Steve and his team, but also Adam, Dave Zabel when he was there, Eric Ferguson, and others have been very supportive and worked with us and put in countless hours on this project. When I go to the processor concerns that I've heard, first of all, I'll just talk about what was directed at us about experience. Me personally, I've been working on the financing, development, and operations and contracting of infrastructure projects my entire career and have led development of over $1 billion of the projects in the last 10 years. The entire team that we put together, I think we put together a world-class team for this project. Swinerton Builders builds, you know, multi-billion-dollar balance sheet, does a lot of projects just like this. It was probably the number-one anaerobic digester company in the world. And they have been, they have done, I think, 500 of these in operation, the anaerobic digesters that were chosen, and they are designing. So they're one of the best wastewater treatment engineers in the world. We're bringing in a firm called Aqua Tech to be our day-to-day operators that also have experience, years of experience operating these type of projects. And of course, Phil, who you just talked to from Grosswind, and all their years in wastewater treatment. So we do have a very experienced team building this, building this project, and I just want to make sure that that comes off clearly. And also that we're very aware that this is a wastewater treatment project. Of course it is. Now, we do come from the RNG. That's why we brought it to you guys, and that's why we got there. But RNG and anaerobic digestion are our core competencies as a company. The nitrogen removal was a little different, but we feel very comfortable working with Phil and his team and Aqua Tech and their team to make sure that we can run that part of the project. So I just thought I should address that as we're talking. And then about the concerns, and there's been a lot of concerns about cost. And I'm going to throw out something that may be somewhat counterintuitive. And believe me, I know that it's expensive. In fact, Burnham is the company that's going to be writing the check. So we're aware that it's gotten pretty expensive. But I'll say something counterintuitive, and sometimes I think instead of getting unhappy letters, Steve should sometimes get happy letters or thank you letters. And I'll refer you guys to a 2019 study, and this is obviously three to four years before Burnham was ever involved. This was done, and we read it, you guys are probably aware of it, probably commissioned it, the PWRF Capital Facilities Plan written in 2019 by Jacobs. That was estimating $20 million a year in treatment costs would be needed at the PWRF. That's about what Steve is projecting now and what FCS is projecting now with the Burnham program. So you say, okay, well, so what happened? Well, one thing I'll tell you that has happened between 2019 and 2023, and I think you guys are all aware of this, is that it's been inflation that nobody in the world could have ever predicted. Everybody in the, every capital project across the country and frankly, across the world, costs have gone up substantially. And yet, somehow, the treatment costs for the PWRF are exactly what they're projected to be in 2019. And so how is that possible? I'll tell you that the reason that I think it's possible is because I think Steve figured out that the Process Water Reuse Facility is actually a resource recovery facility, right? And so that there's value in the wastewater. And that if you capture the energy and you capture the nutrients and you capture the credits, carbon credits, there's actually value there that could be used to reduce your treatment costs. And I think that was the plan. And I think that's, you know, they've looked at everything, believe me. I've been on these calls with the processors for months. They've looked at every opportunity that they possibly could. But recovering the resources are good. And I'm just going to give you some simple math on the RNG because unfortunately, I think there's been confusion on the math on the RNG and saying, is it really valuable? Is it really useful? So here's just kind of how it makes sense to me in the very simplest terms. It costs about $25 million to build the RNG facility. You got to build the digesters anyway, so the RNG is 25 million. We know that that makes you eligible for a tax credit worth at least 30 million. So if we're just scoring at home, you get the RNG for free and actually $5 million against the rest of your treatment plant. And then, for the next 30 years, you're getting 6 million plus a year in revenue. And so I think that's, you know, really valuable. And I think that's one of, I think that's the reason you haven't seen treatment costs go up as fast as they would, or they would have had you have not had the RNG involved and had you have not had, you know, I think, an innovative this financing plan. And believe me, like I said, they've looked at a lot of different designs. I'll also tell you a second reason is this public-private partnership structure that we've developed with the City of Pasco. We have some of the lowest-cost financing for this project that I think is available. I don't think any of the processors can get anywhere near this level of a low-cost debt that we got for the project. That, we got $50 million from Washington Economic Development Finance Authority. All of these things have helped to bring the cost to where they are today, which I recognize to be higher than we need and higher than we want, but also lower than they could have otherwise been. I'll say that, you know, on the finance, one other piece, just to just to mention, that, you know, we did competitively bid for this project. And then after the competitive bids came out, we then competitively bid. Swinerton won the lowest-cost contract, which has been another thing that's kept costs down. Not only did they have the lowest total estimated cost for the project, but also had the lowest fees, offered a guaranteed maximum price. There was some kind of comment that there was not a guaranteed maximum price there is. And also, they had the lowest fees and lowest overhead of any of the construction companies that bid on the project. So we've taken a number of steps to keep costs down, and we will continue to do so. As a final comment on costs, and I'm going to give yield time back, we continue, we are very cost-focused. I mean, it's an environmentally focused company, but we think about costs every day and how to bring them down. We work with Steve and his team to bring things down. We have a list of value engineering opportunities that we constantly pursue. The engineers on my team are motivated both professionally and also just incentives in order to get the cost down as low as they can. We've already achieved $6 million of value engineering, and we have a whole list of others that we're trying to go after. So we will continue to try to bring costs down. And so I'll pause, but just say that I think this is going to be a great project for Pasco. I know, I recognize that you guys, you know, I think you guys have a need for a project. I don't think there's a better alternative out there. I think the alternative that some would push you towards is delay. And I don't think delay is good for anybody, including the processors themselves, because ultimately, something's got to get built. Interest rates continue to go up. Construction costs continue to go up, and I think you've got a great solution here. So thank you for your time. I look forward to a long, long, productive relationship and partnership with you guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Just one second, sir. We do have one other person virtually, correct? Mr. Doug Pedinger, Pedinger? I apologize that I butchered your last name.
Nope, no problem. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I would just like to add a facet that I think warrants noting. And that is that the Process Water Reuse Facility happens to sit in an area that is not real conducive to land application. The soils, they're low moisture holding capacity. The soils are a challenge. They drain quickly. This was all revealed in a state study in 2016 that the Department of Ecology conducted statewide and looked at soils and nitrogen issues across the state. And because of that, the land application is certainly okay in those areas, but it's an area where you have got to pay very strict attention to what you're doing. Working with other landowners that may not be as dedicated as they need to be or running high-strength waste without nitrogen removal out to those type of fields is just not sustainable. It's a risky proposition. You're much better off to use the land wisely and sparingly to back you up and to pull nitrogen out of the water. It's the safest, most sustainable approach. From a science and engineering standpoint, I do not see a valid argument against that position. So I continue to see, as Dairy Gold's spokesman for wastewater treatment, I can, I continue to see that as the most logical, safest, soundest, sustainable approach that the city could take. And we continue to stand in support of the direction that the city is going. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Do we have any further questions from council? Gentlemen, if you'd like to step to the podium, please state your name for the record. Your microphone was on already, if you want to. There you go.
You've been telling everybody else.
Button.
They left it on for you.
My name is Bruce Anderson. I'm a new resident of Pasco. A gentleman here made the comment that all plants need nitrogen to grow. They've grown for 1,000 years. I grow lilies with bulbs, and they love nitrogen. This last summer, I grew gladiolas, and I poured the nitrogen on it, and all it did was make green. It grows wonderful greenery. And I looked on the internet, and what did I do wrong? Gladiolas don't like nitrogen. So I flushed my nitrogen out of the gladiolas, and for a sudden, I had huge gladiola flowers. So if this company wants to pull nitrogen out and use it to make biofuels or whatever they're doing, let them do it. And let the city of Pasco sell clean water with nothing else in it, because not every plant wants nitrogen. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. And with that, hearing no further comments, we'll entertain a motion.
So, Madam Mayor, if I can ask a couple more clarifying questions, or would you like me to make a motion first?
Well, if we can make a motion, then we can ask more questions off the top.
I have more information I would like to receive on this before I would be willing to I guess I'm gonna have some questions about the motion itself, so if you don't mind me asking.
I'm just following policy, sorry, procedure, but if there's a different way we should do it, Mr. Erickson, go ahead.
So yeah, it looks like we, you have a couple things you can continue to go forward with this particular motion for approval, or if you'd like to move to continue this to another meeting so that you can get those questions answered, we can certainly follow up with that and do it that way.
I appreciate that. I would like to move it to a future date. Would staff have a recommendation of when we want to discuss it next? Would be next Monday would be the appropriate time, or a couple of weeks? I'm looking for some advice on this.
We could do it as early as a special meeting on the upcoming Monday. That would give us at least a little more time to work with processors on some of the items that I think are still outstanding on our side.
I appreciate that. What I heard from Director Worley was that there was a number of items that might be new to the processors, and a partnership is much better than a, than an argument if we can get there, so I'm, you know, I see this being very favorable, but I'm interested to make sure we can work a little more. So with that, I would, I would move to table this item until next Monday, the the 27th of February.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor say aye. Councilman Zorano?
Yep, just wait for the other option.
Oh, okay. I apologize. And any opposed?
No.
Okay. Noted, thank you. And it passes with my cluster of five of us and one no. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, actually, we will need to take a five-minute break before we move on with our agenda. So we'll be back here at 9:01. Okay, it is 9:01:37, and we are back from our mini-break, and we'll move on with our agenda. Next item on the agenda, item 10B, Resolution Number 4312, incorporate the Pasco School District's 2022 Capital Facility Plan update into the city's comprehensive land use plan, and we have Director Worley.
Actually, I'll handle this one, Madam Mayor, thank you. The, this item concerns the inter-local agreement the city of Pasco has with the Pasco School District, and that agreement requires the city to consider every two years the district's capital improvement plan into our land use comprehensive plan. The district's plan identifies the new facilities that are associated with enrollment growth within the district, and incorporates the Pasco School District's capital improvement plan into the city's comprehensive plan, which allows the city to continue to collect impact fees and pass those on to the district. Council heard a very detailed presentation on this roughly a month ago, and staff would recommend approval of the proposed resolution.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Do we have any comments, questions from council? Mayor Bertamaloni?
Thank you. Director White, just to, just to make sure we're 100% clear with the listening public, this does not change any impact fee. This is maintaining the existing impact fee.
Yes, it's been in place since 2012 and remains the same as it was then.
Great, thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 4312, incorporating the Pasco School District's 2022 updated capital facilities plan into the city of Pasco's comprehensive land use plan.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Compos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm, this is a belated aye as in a yes.
Got it, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, item C, Resolution 4313, purchase and sale agreement for real property Rico Road, Rico Row, and interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll take this one. Zach said a trainee conference, so I'll do my best to fill in for him. So the item before you is purchasing a little bit of property for a future right-of-way. Last summer, staff got pretty serious about how to address some of the traffic flow issues that are foreseen with the, all the economic development that's happening in the surrounding East A Street, basically, as we see the Amazons of the world, and Terragons of the world, and local bounties of the world, trying to mitigate some of the truck traffic that would be heading west on East A Street. This is in planning efforts to basically run Road 40 East north, connecting with East Lewis Place at as a future project. So this is a portion of right-of-way purchase for about a little over $60,000 from the Rico family. See if I missed anything here. That's everything. Recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that brief introduction. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing or seeing no comments, Councilman Zorano, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 4313, authorizing the purchase of real property located at 3932 East Lewis Street, Pasco, Washington, for a future right-of-way.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Zorano, although, sorry, Councilman Compos. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we move on to item 11, unfinished business, and we do have, I made notes. And that would be item You did tell me that.
Yeah, that was 8B.
Correct. So, public hearing continued and ordinance number 4641 for Mendoza right-of-way vacation. Jubilee Foundation. It is the, I take that one back. I am going into the public hearing continued and ordinance number 4642 Jubilee Foundation right-of-way vacation.
So, Mayor, we've actually caught a couple issues with the report and discrepancies in the actual ordinance, so staff would like permission to bring that back at the next regular, or the next special meeting, since we're gonna have another item on the agenda if possible.
And this is for the dated on the 27th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so are there any questions, comments, Councilman Compos?
Before I make a motion, there was someone who was wishing to speak on this. We want to give them the floor to address anything before we bring it back. I mean, is that considered a public hearing? What do we?
So, public hearing is already open, actually, so that's up to council how you'd like to handle that.
A gentleman that had comment regarding this issue, if you'd like to address council, please state your name and address for the record. If you can turn on your microphone.
There it is. Name's Diodo Almaraz, lived at 417 Road 36. My concern is not having the two-way lane that needs to be there for the right-of-way due to the fact that when roads get built, how are cars gonna be going in and out, as well as garbage trucks and other stuff that needs to be handled through the city? As soon as that two-way lane is gone, everything stops. And I'm not gonna be putting sidewalks on my property when it should be on the city's property.
Okay.
That's it.
Any, okay, thank you very much for your comment. That's been recorded. Appreciate that. So we will bring this back again on special meeting for February 27th. Comment from Councilman Compos.
We have to make a motion before we, which, going back, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing, and you want to make it separate motions, I can do them two at the same time. Continue the public hearing until the next special meeting? Leave it at that. Keep it simple.
There's a motion. Can we get a second? Seconded by Councilman Milne. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? None, and it passes unanimously. Thank you again for that motion. And with that, we do move on to our next item on the agenda. Item 12, new business, 12A, consideration of potential rescission of Resolution Number 4303. And I will defer that back to Attorney Eric Ferguson.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this was put back on the agenda based on council motion. Last time, we discussed what the next steps would be with regard to whether council wanted to potentially consider a motion to rescind the previous motion that was made passing or approving Resolution 4303. So at this point, there was, if we all recall, because it wasn't properly noticed at the time, the motion to rescind failed because it was required a two-thirds of a majority. The until it could be put on an agenda where it would be properly noticed, at which point a motion to rescind would only require a simple majority to rescind the original motion approving Resolution 4303.
Thank you. So at this point, we can make a motion, correct?
That's correct.
Are there any comments from council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. And entertain discussion afterwards, if that's all right.
Okay, so we have a
I move to rescind the motion approving Resolution Number 4303, retail cannabis with conditional use permit in I-1, I-2, and I-3 zones, approved by council at January 17, 2023 meeting.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Madam Mayor, a point of order. I'd like to have further discussion on this item before we vote.
Okay, open for discussion.
What I think I heard from my fellow council members in our last discussion was that there was some, there was some confusion on having seven options in front of us, and I believe a member of the public had made that same comment before. And given that the resolution was directing staff to produce an ordinance, that we would then have that we would then have to choose whether we support or not at that time, and of course, one of my concerns is that we asked to have to put a lot of work into an ordinance and then we turn around and reject it. It sounds like a number of council members are still needing further discussion. And so I support this rescission so that we can have that further discussion and I would and and my, I I intend if this motion were to pass to provide a further motion asking us to add it to our next workshop meeting to discuss further so that council can narrow it down from what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven options down to a smaller number so that we can have a simpler vote in front of us so that all of our council can, you know, be on the same page as to which which ordinance is. And so the public can understand which motions are in front of us and what that looks like. So those are the two items that I'd like to bring up. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is, I'd like to read into the record a an editorial that was provided by Mr. Dallas Barnes into the Tri-City Herald. It was, I think, I saw it published today, maybe it was published a year or two ago. And I won't read the whole thing, I'll read some salient points from it. So I'll just, I'll read read this verbatim. Pasco Council site selection is blatantly discriminatory. As such, their majority vote continues to stigmatize East Pasco in its historic historical apartheid-like manner. Despite noteworthy housing developments and other visible improvements, East Pasco is is an area of choice to concentrate local social problems. Thus, it remains one of the Tri-City's undesired residential communities because of this stigma. At the recent Pasco City Council, Pasco City meeting, one official characterized East Pasco as accommodating for cannabis sales because of its, quote, "industrial zoning, loud noises, junkyards, truck traffic, and bad odors," end quote. Not mentioned were the foundational causes and lingering consequences of governmental decisions that included the segregation of blacks, industrial waste dumping, World War Two prisoners, and tolerance of vice activities due to civic contempt. So when we're considering this and reading this, that really hit me very deeply because this is something I think about quite a bit. If you take a map of our industrial zones and the commercial zones that we were considering and you overlay a map of our most impoverished citizens and residents, you'll note that they're virtually the same. So when we're considering our actions here of whether we, what to do moving forward, I think we need to consider strongly this, and I don't think this is an item that we have, we as a council have discussed. And that helps, that to me furthers our need for further discussion, understanding exactly what the implications are to an already disadvantaged group within our community. So with that, again, I've, this is why I'm supporting, made the motion and supporting the motion of rescission, again, to save staff time as well as make sure that we as a council are truly understanding what we're what we're trying to pass here. And then further, I will ask for further discussion at a future workshop meeting for us to, as a council, narrow down our options and provide better direction to staff and clarity to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any additional comments?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano, I'll make two points. I've spent some time reviewing both the meetings, and it seemed that we were all pretty clear on what we were voting on. I'll leave that point at that, if you have questions, I suggest you watch those meetings. The second one is a comment was made about having the ability to have a public vote, and and that was earlier, there was a second comment about having missed the deadline, and that was one deadline that I mentioned. We literally missed putting on this, putting this on to a vote to the public to see what the real temperature was, not a people who would show up on a Tuesday night, but an actual vote in November where we know the turnout would be strong. We'd missed our opportunity to fully pulse and engage the public. Workshops, great, having had several meetings, that's great, but we missed our opportunity. If we're going to continually discuss this, we need full public input, and we should shelf it and at least either contemplate one of two things. Running this through a special election process, excuse, excuse me. Alternatively, you know, the primaries are coming up in fairly short order, within less than five months, I believe, I guess, six and a half, five and a half months. So maybe that's the time for us to really engage our citizenry to understand what all their thoughts are, not some of their thoughts. So I will continue to advocate for full, transparent, and open conversation, including a vote of the people. So those are the two points that I've made, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as as this has progressed, again, not disputing the fact that this has started off as a grassroots movement, there was enough traction behind this to warrant councils further discussion on this back in February of twenty twenty three. This has grown larger than a grassroots movement. We have a lot of data in front of us, and admittedly, you know, I'm open-minded, I'd like to see the free market do its thing. I'm I'm open to putting it in C two, I'm opening to put it down in the industrial zones. But to Councilman Serrano's point, you know, this doesn't line up with our city council goals and how much traction we've given this over the course of a year. I'm kinda on board with Councilman Serrano, I'm in no rush to to do this. I wanted to make sure that the people who really started this off got their voices heard, and we've done that through numerous listening sessions, through numerous council discussions, we've had open discussions about it, we've invited the public to it, and, you know, the further this goes on, the more clear it is that people are just not willing to stand by us when we make a decision. They're not allowing us to make that decision. And so to Councilman Serrano's point, if they wanna be the ones to make the decision, I think we ought to pulse them for that. To Councilman Maloney's point, I wanna make sure that I have the data out there, and that's that's a data point. It this is just, this has just gone very long, grown tired of listening to some of the comments on it. A lot of it has been the same thing, I understand people's opinions on it, but really, I'm focused on the yes or no. I, the data is the the data, you know, there's been an uptick here, you can look at it, there's been a downward tick here, kids are using, kids aren't using, I've heard both sides, I'm focused on, are you for it, are you against it? And I think there's really only one way to figure that out. I'd be in support of opening this discussion up tonight further, if we rescind the vote. I think I understand the implications on it is to just further discussion, and I'd be open to that.
Thank you, Councilman Mil.
Thank you, Mayor, I would agree with Councilman Campos and Serrano. I mean, if we're gonna rescind it, and we should give to the vote, I mean, again, I know with the Aquatic Center, we put that to the vote, not all the whole council was on board, some were for, some was against. But I mean, again, at the end of the day, we should let all our citizens speak, and I think, you know, five months should definitely be a good enough time to let people speak and tell us what they think. It's it's definitely difficult to, you have your own moral and ethical decisions to make, but again, when the citizens say, hey, we want an aquatic center, and I wasn't totally on board with that, but when they say it, then I gotta move forward with it and support it because that's what the citizens want. So I definitely think we should give everybody a chance to vote on this considering the, all the feedback that we've gotten, whether it's bad for the kids, I mean, I know it is, but I'm just saying, with all the data that we have, it should be brought before the general public. Our city is growing, so let's give it to, for everybody to to weigh in and then see where the chips fall on that. So that's what I I believe is the best route.
Thank you for your comments, any further comments? So before us, we have the opportunity to bring it, to table this for now and bring it back to a workshop to provide staff a more clear.
We would need to, from my understanding, Madam Mayor, we'd still need to make a motion to vote to rescind that vote before we even go that route first.
Right, and so the discussion is, this is what is being proposed.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Okay, we're not giving direction now, this is what the idea would be. And I hope that clarifies, all right, so we do have a motion. At this point, is there any further discussion from council? Mayor Potemaloni?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd recommend a roll call vote in this case.
Okay, I think you had a roll call vote. Just a second.
Roll call, cool.
Okay.
Just a little bit ahead of it.
Okay.
Okay, Roach is gone, so Councilmember Serrano.
Before I vote, just to clarify, the vote is to rescind the vote, that's, that's as far as we're carrying is correct?
That's correct.
No.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Mil?
No.
Councilmember Maloney?
Yes.
And Mayor Prote, uh, Mayor Brajas?
Yes.
So that's four, four, and two against, so it passes.
Thank you. All right, any additional comments, Mayor Potemaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Brajas. I would, I would like to make a motion to specifically put this on an agenda. However, I don't know how packed our next workshop meeting is supposed to be, and I would hesitate to place a another item that will be a lively discussion on a packed agenda. So I'm looking for some direction from staff as to whether I should make a motion at this time or whether we, whether staff is hearing us that we may wanna have further discussion. I, I'm not trying to presume either, both from staff perspective or council perspective, but now that we rescinded this, it seems that we need to have some discussion, be it, no matter what alternative, be it put on the ballot or otherwise, we still need to have that discussion.
So looking at workshop meetings, there's some busy ones coming up here, got comp plan amendments and. We were planning on putting the ordinance on March twenty seventh workshop. If that's not too far out, that would be.
Would we be able to have this discussion during a regular business meeting if we carve out some time for that?
We could do that on the sixth of March, which would be your next regularly scheduled regular meeting.
All right, I move to continue discussion on our retail cannabis sales on the meeting of March sixth of twenty twenty three.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Brown, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Four two, correct?
Yes, four two.
Thank you. And it passes, so we'll bring that back on March sixth. With no further items on the agenda, do we have any closing remarks for our city interim city manager?
None tonight.
None tonight, any miscellaneous discussion from council? Hearing none, it is nine twenty six, and this meeting is officially done, thank you, everyone.